I'll be part of the team. I came to Louisville via weather curt. I'm the city manager there, so very thrilled that you've been so welcoming here and made me feel so comfortable. So it's a little bit like coming home already. So I'm glad, I'm enjoying it a lot. Welcome. Thank you. All right, let's go ahead and move into the agenda. First up, we've got a couple of proclamations. Item E1, public hearing, BBMU, and we are going to go into closed session for this one as well. There's some conversation to be had. Public hearing number two, special use permit for self-service storage facility.
Did they change the law on that, didn't they? On the SUPs, did they change the law on that?
I'm talking about how you have to break in a apartment. I don't know if there was a change in law, but I think our direction from legal is to separate the two. Okay.
Consent agenda, approval in a minute. Core law plan for state highway business 121. Memorandum of agreement with Veterans Affairs for Thrive. Change order for Timberbrook, item 6.
I do want to call that out real quick. Yeah. So I was really impressed. It's a $12 million project, it'd be 7% with a 7% of budget. That's an accomplishment, actually. So it looks like a big number for the change request. To be 7% of budget for a product that big, it's impressive, so I would say. I look beyond the ask of $600,000 and $550,000 for the bigger picture. So anyway, thanks for that.
Especially with everything.
Oh, yeah.
They had to deal with it.
That was nuts.
That was riding the bronco.
We're just happy that this is, we're happy this is coming to a close.
Yes, I think the neighborhood is too, and I have heard from the neighbors that they are very appreciative of what has been done, yes. Item seven, appointment to Old Town Design Review, and I think--
I got a recusance up on there.
--that's where Kate has to step away from that one.
Are we gonna have that discussion out there?
Unless you want to have it in here. If we have it in here, we gotta have Ronnie step away then. We're okay with it out there.
Look at her, she's just, she's like toying with you.
Well, we'll do it out there.
We can do it out there.
DRMC, item eight. I've got several council members who have asked, or at least expressed some interest, which is great. Again, anything that we can do to be at the table in the region, I think, is important because if you're in the room, those conversations create opportunities for the city that don't happen if you're not in the room. So I want to thank all of the council for making this a part of your service. I know it's difficult to get these added in. With that being said, I don't know what everybody's got, but I want to make sure that we're sharing the wealth. So when we have that conversation for item eight, just we'll have a conversation and see who wants it and go from there. Fair enough. And that, I think, is all we've got. We do have closed session. We do have one closed session right now.
On top of--
On top of--
Okay.
Yeah, on top of it. So I thought we were gonna do those in two separate. We'll do one at the beginning and one at the end. All right. No further comments. We'll go ahead and move to our workshop session, item B, discussion of fiscal year 2023-24 employee compensation and benefits changes. We do have Tad Phillips, our Director of Human Resources, who has been working his took us off ever since day one.
It's took us.
You couldn't tell if he looked good.
I just want you to know that we see the work, Ted.
Appreciate that. All right, good evening. So, yeah, this presentation is really, it's that time of year as we get into budget season, look ahead for employee compensation and benefits, particularly in this year, as we see, as we've already had a lot of discussions around that, we have a lot of changes, and it impacts budget. Before I jump into the meat of the presentation, I just want to thank Sharla. Sharla Reeves is our HR manager. She manages comp and benefits, and so I've been continuously, or 14 times a day, on a variety of things tied to this presentation. Appreciate her work and the whole HR team. This presentation is really to give, at a high level, overview of what we're talking about today. Talk about council priorities as it relates to recruitment and retention for city employees. Talk about your actions over this last year as a refresher. Show a few metrics, and then delve into what's going on with compensation, with some opportunities around flexible and work-life balance for employees and employee benefits, and walk through a lot of those are cost items, so talk through each of those. I like to start with the end in mind, so start with kind of the summary of where I'm going with this presentation upfront. I think it's important to note that following through on council priorities that you all have established before on employee feedback will help us recruit and retain, but the list of items that you see here and that you see in the presentation is not finalized. This is all dependent on overall budget situation and priorities that are set between management and then you all in the budget process. But what we're talking about today primarily is on employee compensation, looking ahead to next year, talk about market dynamics, merit and step pay increases for flexible work. We're gonna talk about the potential addition of another holiday for city employees, and on our vacation policy, removing a barrier. Right now, we require a six-month wait period before employees can use vacations, so looking at slight policy adjustment there. And then a lot of work around benefits that we've been doing to make significant changes looking ahead to January 2024, and I'll walk through all those details. We've got a couple others I'm gonna go through as well that we described as under review. Those are items that'll come back to you for further discussion through the budget process, but that is looking at some follow-up items from our compensation study, including job family progression and certain education pay for police officers and firefighters. So just a reminder, this is your priority. You all reestablished this back in March, employee recruitment, development, and retention. You highlighted, these are sub-bullets of you all's priority. You all have said, and have shown through your actions this year, that you want to prioritize recruiting the best available candidates for our jobs, to offer fair and competitive compensation and benefits, and to continually educate employees on available benefits. There's other sub-bullets of this priority of you all, but they're not necessarily the focus of today's presentation. This is a reminder of what have, what have we as an organization, what do you as council, have we as the organization done in regards to employee recruitment and retention this year, and it's a lot. What we did back in October is we looked at the marketplace and moved all pay structures and employees 2% with the market back in October, and then for our swarm, police officers and firefighters, it was similar to that with a little bit of difference. We also, as far as people progressing through their ranges for police officers and firefighters, typically that's through a step program. Employees were eligible for their steps this year on their anniversary date, and then for general employees, that's their merit increase, also eligible on their anniversary date. Both of those approximately 4% this year. All those steps differ depending on what rank they're in in police or fire. And then, the big one was, that was the big start to the year, and then you all helped us bring through compensation study implementation back in April. You all helped set a standard and said, we want to be a lead city. We want to have that level of leadership, obviously, is budget contingent, but we set targets to match our markets, or, excuse me, match our structures to 103% or 3% above the average of the market for our job structures, and that you all said, we want to make sure that all of our employees earn a living wage, which at the time in Denton County was $18.24 an hour, and you want to make sure your full-time employees are above that minimum threshold. So with that leadership, we moved forward with changes in April, a $5.2 million increase to annual salaries, which is huge, and that ended up in significant increases for our general employees. Everybody was not affected the same. It depended on the job and the situation, some more than others across the group. That was approximately 10% pay increase, which was huge. You may look at that in comparison to the other numbers here and say, why is that so much larger? And that's just because that was that much further behind at that point in time. But we really appreciate council's support and leadership, and us taking all those actions back in the spring. And then we also did the benefits survey some months prior. We've been building up for action for that, and I'm gonna share some of that with you today, but follow-up action for benefit survey is coming on this next fiscal year.
And just to reiterate, so you saw there was a smaller percentage on police and fire, but that's because we were already leading with them. So they were already matched to 103%. We just brought general government to match what we were doing with police and fire.
Absolutely. So next couple slides are just about, just some stats on where we're at as it comes to competition for talent. What I'm most interested in on this slide is just showing a three-year history of vacancies in the organization. You've heard that repeatedly. One of our challenges has been filling positions. It started in COVID, and then with the just overall challenges of the labor market. So what you saw back in 2021, at that time, at that moment in time in June of '21, we had 64 vacancies. At the same time last year, we had ballooned up to 113, and today, or as of a week or two ago, we're down to 95, which is still higher than we want to be, but it's turning back in the right direction. Kind of shown a different way. I like this visual because this shows, this is a, well, first shout-out to our IT group. They do great data analytics, and this is just one of the things that they provide for us. But this shows our daily turnover rate over the last 12 months. So early on, we were at about 19% turnover. You see that as a steady decline, down to around 15% as of a couple weeks ago, and then our vacancy rate, how many positions sit vacant, we were up close to 15%. We're now closer to 10% today. So it's trending in the right direction, positive signs. However, both those measures are higher than we want them to be, or they have been historically, but they're definitely improved from where they were a year ago. So just another reminder that continued work in this arena can help us drive those numbers further in the right direction.
Ted?
Yes, sir.
Do we have any industry standards or showing that we're on par, a little bit ahead, a little bit behind for peer cities?
Yeah, yeah. I did pull something specifically for this presentation, but we talked back in March, we talked about turnover rates, and a lot of our comparative organizations were north of 20% at a lot of the cities nearby at that point in time. Haven't pulled it for today, but I bet it's maybe trending slightly better like us, but still, I think we're just slightly ahead of that average, but we're tracking similar to them.
I also had a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
So for the, on the slide before this one?
Yeah.
Between '21 and '22 was, that's obviously a big jump, but was that because we were adding positions back in as well? I know we, I know we lost some positions in 2020--
You're right.
--and then we were adding some back in, so--
We did add more positions, so--
Okay, so there, that explains some of the--
It may have, yeah.
Some of the vacancies.
Good point.
Yep.
So that's some of the data. Just, now we're gonna jump into compensation specifically, and just to refresh on how generally the ways we approach maintaining compensation structures, primarily in two buckets. One is market, one is merit. So when we look at market, we're assessing external factors, external forces, to identify what are competitive pay rates for our organization. Ideally, when we move market, you're moving the structure and the people within the structure simultaneously, so they maintain their relative position within that structure, if you can afford to do so. An example of market movement is what we did back in October this last year. We moved all the general pay structures 2%, the employees with it. We moved the police officer and firefighter pay structures approximately 2.5%, and those employees moved with it. The other way that employees progress through a range and through some kind of progression is typically through a merit or a step program. Step program is very unique, more industry-wise, particularly to police and fire. That's the standard, but for most other employees, it's merit. So this allows folks to progress through that range and see progression. Last year was, on average, about 4% for our employees. So market and merit. Talking about market, these are 17 comparative organizations. You all have seen this before. This is just a reminder. These are the 17 organizations that we primarily peg ourselves against and used for the changes that we did in April. In addition to these 17 cities, we also look at private sector data where available using ERRI, and then we match to a couple of the water districts locally as well. So thanks, thanks to y'all's leadership. We've identified this is our current compensation philosophy. Overall philosophy is to be a leading city. This is what the council said, and the level of leadership is obviously dependent upon, annually based upon budgetary ability. What does that look like practically for our general employees? That's us targeting market structures at 103% of market midpoint to midpoint, funding annual merit raises for that progression throughout, through the pay ranges as they're established, and then assuring full-time employees earn a living wage. And as of today, the MIT numbers we used back in April are still the same number, so we're still ahead of living wage standards. And then police and fire are similar, but we target 103% of the top step of the, or the max step of those pay structures, and then funding annual steps. So talking, continuing on on market, we'll look specifically at both police officer and firefighter, because those are great indicators. I hope y'all can see this slide okay. What this slide's made to show is what is the current market situation. So we just made changes in April, and you see as of a couple weeks ago, the new market data average for the top step of a firefighter is $91,334. We're at $91,618. So we're slightly ahead of that market average today. However, we're slightly behind the target of 103% of that market average, or this $94,074 number. So you may ask, why has this shifted since we just did raises back in April? And that is because the data we used from the compensation study was dated about January 1, and since January 1, we've seen eight of our 17 cities move their firefighter pay to the extent, varied by group. Crisco had a large one, McKinney had a large one, a lot of other cities that have been going through compensation studies similar to what we did this year, and so we've seen a lot of market movement. So if we follow our methodology, right over at $91,618, if we target 103% of market effective October, we would move to $94,074, and that would move us, relatively speaking, up to the number five city of the 17 with fire pay.
Can I ask you a question?
Please.
I know you've explained it, or you have, Claire. Why do we have Dallas and Fort Worth in our name?
Because those are the ones that we also lose and--
We're pulling--
--from, okay, yeah, they're competitors.
That's right. It's a mix of proximity and like cities, and they're not always like cities, yeah. So continuing with fire, we also look at the ranks above. So there, that, in that example I just showed you, we were 2.68% off of our target. At the upper ranks, we're a little bit better, but we're still a little bit behind, about 1.8 at driver, 1.9 at captain, and 1.24 at battalion chief. I know it's hard to see, but what you see on the right there is what these pay structures would look like in October with making these adjustments. So by increasing firefighter by 2.68%, the top step, which is what we're using as our target, would move up to $94,074, and the start pay for a new firefighter would move up to $74,460 per year. As you see on the step system, the system moves in October, and then if the employee's been here for a year, or two, or three years on their anniversary date, they move that step until they're topped out. Similar story on police officer. There's, seven of the 17 cities have moved since January 1, and it's a very similar story, almost identical numbers as well. We're ahead of the survey average right now, but we're not ahead of our target of 103%. So that would move by about 2.37% on October 1. This, the result of that movement would put us third. And you may ask, why would the same methodology result in third for police officer and fifth for firefighter? And it's really just the characteristics of the data. In this particular dataset, Arlington through Allen, which is six cities, they're all within $900 of each other. So if you move a little bit, we just basically move right above that clump of cities. So as a ranking, it goes slightly higher, but it's the same methodology. So as data shifts, you'll see, you know, it'll behave differently with each group every time, but it still gets us to that threshold of the market average plus 3%. On the upper ranks, you see here sergeant, a little bit behind. Captain, we're actually just slightly ahead of market, so there would be no movement for captain. And you see here with that change is we push the top out for police officer of just shy $100,000, $99,990, and start paid for police officer of $79,000. So that's market. Now the other part, the merit or steps piece for these swarm personnel. So there, you see, police officers and firefighters are eligible for steps, as I just described. Those are typically, at the bottom rank, they're typically 4%, they vary a little bit at the other ranks. But as you see, a lot of folks, because we only have a certain number of steps, we do have a lot of folks already topped out. So next year, we got about a quarter of all police officers eligible for a step, and a third of all firefighters eligible for a step. And there's also cost items, I just want to make sure we highlight it here. Now switching from police and fire to all the rest of the team, so general market, what we've done since we just did a really comprehensive market survey of everybody just a few months ago, and market is really capturing 200-plus job titles, doing all kinds of different jobs. We did a quick, limited look at the market with 12 positions. We've also been talking further with our compensation consultant, and we identified that we think a reasonable strategy is in October to move those structures by 1%, so a slight movement to continue to attract market, and we think that that's responsive to the marketplace. And then for general employees, merit increase next year would be a 3%. So combined total between those two of 4% for general employees next year. That's everything on compensation. Now I'm gonna move over to some of the other things that we've been looking at through the comp study and otherwise. We identified, looking at our vacation policy, that in general, our vacation policy is good. We have a, we do not allow employees to take any vacation within the first six months. Talked to a few of our supervisors and managers, and I think they find different ways to try and work around that policy, or have people take unpaid time. And as we're trying to retain these folks that are new, I think we want to just remove that barrier going forward. The good news is, a manager always has to give approval for somebody to use vacation time. So somebody's not performing, if they're not doing their job, the manager is not required to approve vacation time. But that's a change we think that'll make us more competitive and more likely to retain those early-month employees, where they don't leave the job because they have to take a week off because they have a sick family member or something to that effect.
Ted?
Yes?
If we go to approve something like that--
Yeah.
Okay. Just gonna be old school about it. You see stories in the media where people get a new gig and they burn all their vacation time and then they leave.
Yeah.
And there's, while not everyone, there's definitely an undercurrent of this kind of activity going on--
Sure.
--in the market today. I would, really would want to look back and see how management handled those requests over a year, just to make sure that we're not getting burnt.
Well, here's another piece to the story. So today, with our current policy, if an employee leaves within their first year, they do not get paid their vacation time. They don't get paid out any vacation time till they've been here over a year. This only impacts the first six months of employment, so they're not getting paid out the time, no matter what they do. I think that might help a little bit. But to your point, we can absolutely track--
They also accrue. Can you talk about how they accrue time, instead of it being on day one, you get a set deadline?
Yeah, absolutely. That's right. As you go, is it every two weeks that we accrue? Yeah, every two weeks, we're accruing an apportionment of that, say, two weeks.
So that helps.
So it's a slow roll of them achieving it, and then they can't just cash it out, so--
So I can say as someone who just started a new job last year, that was torture, because--
He could say that, same thing.
You know, it's an antiquated policy from a different time that is, in the end, it costs you more.
That's fair. I just, I would want to see that management is using their discretion appropriately and not just rolling over for that. I mean--
True point.
If you've got a good culture and you're having good communication, then you know that that's a real deal that's going on. If somebody's gaming the system, ideally, you can pick up on that, too, so--
Absolutely.
Appreciate that.
I mean, I don't have a problem giving our employees the discretion to do the, you know, be more flexible, that's part of the culture here, but I would just want to keep an eye on it, make sure that we're doing it, that it's implemented, that it's the way we think it's going to.
Absolutely. Thank you. Next one on flexible work is holidays. So this, there's a couple of different ways that we've looked at kind of surveying our comparative organizations. We have our data from our compensation study that looked at our 17 cities. They showed on average, cities have 10 holidays. We have nine today. We also get data from the Metroplex survey, which digs a little deeper. It's not the exact same 17 cities, but it's mostly similar cities. And what we found from their data is, their data shows about 10.5 average holidays per employer. What's kind of changing over time in the marketplace, there's more of an observation of Juneteenth, close to half of the organizations are now observing that, and a lot of folks have some kind of personal holiday. Today, we do not, you see us on the left here, we don't have either one of those, so the, and we've also done some studying of this to make sure this isn't a big cost item, but our recommendation is that we create a cultural appreciation day that would be a floating holiday for employees, so it could accrue for them at the beginning of the fiscal year. They could use it on the religious day, birthday, holiday, personal health day of their choosing, but it's to acknowledge that everybody has different things they celebrate. That would be us introducing a personal holiday, I'm sorry, a floating holiday that most other folks have, and then we tie it back to our Jedi goals as well as the concept there. We looked at costing, and we couldn't really find a discernible difference on pay periods that we have holidays, that whether we have, we typically don't actually have additional overtime expenses on those. So I think it's not, you know, it's kind of a sunk cost. It's not a real additional cost for the organization. But it can also say something about our values, and when we go out and recruit talent, we tell them that we have this additional holiday. I think that can help us find folks that are aligned with our values here.
I like, like this.
Yes, sir.
I'm a big fan of the Juneteenth holiday. I'd love to see us talk more about bringing that officially to part of Louisville. See, that's a big deal. I mean, it's, it's more than a, like me and our, Patrick's saying, Juneteenth is a much bigger than that kind of concept. So I'd love to, is this something we talk about at retreat, or is this something--
Oh, no, I mean, like, really, we went back and forth saying, do we want it to be Juneteenth, or do we want to have it a cultural appreciation day? The thought there was that people who wanted to celebrate Juneteenth and take a day off could do it, but then also people who might want to celebrate Yom Kippur could also take off Yom Kippur.
Sure.
And so that was the idea, to have that additional day, so--
Sure. I meant to give you both, personal holiday to use as you see fit, birthday, whatever else you want to do, but Juneteenth is an American holiday. It signifies something huge, and I'd like to see us recognize that as a city in Texas.
So you're talking about doing two days?
Yeah, that's the proposal I'm putting out there.
Are there any other, would you think there's any other financial implications for two days versus the one?
No.
And we don't have to do this right now. This might be better at a retreat--
It would only be 0.5 over whatever party else is there. I don't understand what this 0.5 is. They give a half a day somewhere?
It's just an average, yeah.
Okay. Okay, half a day.
You gotta get from eight to 10, or two to four, or something.
Yeah, really. Choose your time.
I mean, is there any other discussion on that?
Roll the numbers back for retreat.
Okay.
Number two. Let's, let's, let's talk about it.
We miss it out?
I personally like the idea, you pick your own holiday, because I would pick, like, here's my day for me. So that's just because I'm selfish, but I love that idea that you can kind of pick whichever one you want, and we're not really trying to promote one over the other, but I get what Patrick's saying. I mean, Juneteenth is a uniquely Texas holiday, and so I get that there's an opportunity there to have conversations.
Sure, absolutely.
It started--
It's national.
But it is uniquely Texas.
Okay.
It did start in Texas, if you look at--
Well, that's true.
Yeah.
Are you talking about retreat, council retreat, or budget? When we take a budget workshop?
I think we need to do it at budget workshop. Does that make sense? I think it makes more sense to have it there.
Yeah, I think he was wanting to implement it for October, so I didn't want to wait till the next council retreat--
Yeah, no, no, the budget retreat.
Perfect. Okay.
Thanks, Ted.
Thanks for the feedback. So the items that I said at the beginning were under review. A couple of the things that we're looking at closely that you'll have a chance to look at further in your budget retreat, or your budget review, I'm sorry, I'm good. Sorry, I'm new. What's my language? Budget review? Retreat, okay.
I'd review both.
Okay. Is, one is, so we currently today do police officer and firefighter certification and education pay. When we looked at our compensation study, we identified that our pay levels for those When we looked at our compensation study, we identified that our pay levels for those are generally competitive. They're within a few bucks of what the averages are from our competition. However, there's one area of distinction. We only allow for one or the other to be used versus both. And what we found is, in our compared organizations, the majority of them allow for the employees to get both. 11 of the surveyed cities allow both. One of the surveyed cities do it as we do and make them choose one or the other. So that's one of the items that we're going to bring back further at budget retreat. The other one is, this was a big piece of the compensation study as well, is job family progression. So one of the things we talked about at that time was, how do we, and we heard from the employees through the employee survey as well, how do I progress? If I am a maintenance worker, how can I do something before I become a supervisor? I may not be in line to be a supervisor for a very long time and I'd like to progress and not leave the organization. So we have gone through and drafted, first draft, by the way, but a variety of positions that would flow and create those opportunities for employees. There is a cost attached to that. And so what we've done right now is, in the draft form, we've created 32 progressions across the organization at various levels. It would impact about 146 employees. The way it works, you know, let me, let me restate. What we're doing right now with compensation consultants is we're identifying what our job prescriptions will look like and then identifying what are the clear connections. If I am a, for, back to maintenance worker, if I'm a maintenance worker and I want to become a senior maintenance worker, what is my path to achieve that and what is the mechanism to achieve that? So we're still designing and building that now. We will be over the next little bit. But this is looking at how are we going to potentially finance this? This is, again, an under-review item. But we're talking about phasing that, starting with our lower pay grade positions and doing one grouping and then at a later date, doing the upper-level positions as we get through this.
Ted, how common is this with our survey cities?
Haven't expressly looked at this, but I know there's a lot of them that do this. The ones that are progressive and that are doing better retaining staff are doing this. I know that. And it was recommended by our comp consultant as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So this is looking in totality at all those items. We just went through the compensation items, the leave items, and then the under-review items. Just to give you a sense of dollars, for steps for next year for police and fire, it's about $300,000. For merit increases for general employees, it's about three-quarters of a million. For market increases for police and fire, about a million. For that 1% market for everybody else, it's about 500K. Holiday is negligible in cost. The vacation wait period does not have a cost. And then the other two items I just mentioned that are under review, the job family progression is about $486,000 with that phased approach. And then the fire and police certification education pay is about another $125,000.
So is this for all positions, whether they're, they're filled or vacant? Or current positions?
The job family, are you saying there are, do these numbers?
No, we're talking about the budget.
This whole list here.
You're talking about just the costs and how we budget for positions?
I'm talking about this annual cost, the 2.5. That includes every current position we have right now.
Yes.
Whether they're vacant or filled.
We have to assume that, yes. So we budget it if they're full. So then at the end of the year, you'll have salary savings that will either fall to fund balance, which we are able to then use for one-time costs. Or, you know, we are able to move them around. So like, sometimes we use salary savings for our third-party, like with public services needing help with, you know, contracts. We can utilize those for those.
And so there is a potential that when we get to budget workshop, that some departments could be needing or requesting additional staff that would be then in addition to this.
Yes, but there is, right now, minimal because we've expressed that this is going to be a tough year. This is a tough year primarily if you remember that we put weight on ourselves budget-wise because we funded 3 million, but then it was over for this year. Well, we have to, you know, we funded enough for this year because we didn't implement till halfway through the year. So it's going to be a big impact coming next fiscal year, plus this. This 2 million is not out of the norm for us. This is very, within the norm for us for a normal compensation year, just for moves, for steps, as well as others. But it's going to be that in addition with all the compensation adjustments we had to make this year. It's going to carry over to the next. And so all the directors have been told this is a difficult year. And so they're being very strategic about what their real needs are before asking.
One more quick question. Yes, we look at the, look at averages a lot.
Yeah.
When you have small data sets, averages can be skewed by upwards or lowers. Is the reason we all use median instead of average is because that's what it's always done here?
I'm open to it depending on the data set, absolutely, yeah.
I don't know if that affected you either way, I'm just curious.
I know it looked like, when I was, for example, looking at the police officer and firefighter pay, I mean, I looked at those as well. All right, last piece of this presentation. Now we're going to jump to benefits. So we've been focused primarily on compensation. Now we're following up on a planning for employee benefits for next year. So what you see here is a side-by-side of what we heard back from our city employees in a benefits survey that followed the employee survey last year. We heard on the left that the city challenges the employees have with the benefits program. Areas of opportunity for us include medical and out-of-pocket expenses and premiums, narrow network and access to specialists, our current gap insurance on the catastrophic plan, a desire for enhanced retiree coverage, dental maximums and education and understanding. So I'm going to take a second to walk through our response to each of those. I've got some further details on this as well. So on the first one, medical and out-of-pocket expenses and premiums. What we're looking at is redesigning our three plans and turning them into two plans next year. And with that, we'll see a decrease in deductible for one of the two plans. So less out-of-pocket expense for the individual. And broadly across all plans, decreasing the out-of-pocket match for employees and families. So that will decrease costs when folks run into significant medical expenses. We're also, one of the two plans will continue to have an HSA. And we're talking about increasing the city's annual contribution to that HSA plan. We also today have a narrow network. And so the way it works today is if I need to, I'm referred by my general practitioner to a specialist, I have to go to a specific sign a narrow network to go to the specialist. Otherwise, it's treated as out of network. Kind of doesn't make sense because it's hard to get an appointment with the specialist in the first place. And then if you narrow my network even further, it makes it even harder. So we have a lot of challenges and frustration with that. So we're talking about just dropping that narrow network and keeping it open for, for employees going forward. The third one is, one of our three plans right now is called the catastrophic plan with gap insurance. It's a well-intentioned plan designed to keep costs relatively low, but it's very confusing. Nobody uses the gap product. So we're replacing that, making adjustments and tweaks to that plan, make it a little bit more accessible and understandable going forward. The next one is desire for enhanced retiree coverage. And so we just got through getting our actuary to do an analysis of a scenario. I might actually walk through my notes on this to make sure I don't mess up them. We've got some very specific details to share with you guys on this that I don't have in the slide right here. So employees told us they desire enhanced retiree coverage. Today, an employee who participates in our high-deductible HSA plan only contributes $29 a month. So it's employee-only, no dependents. They're just paying $29 a month for an employee. In that scenario, the city is picking up about 96% of the cost. Retiree, so if that employee goes and says tomorrow, I want to retire, retire pricing is very, very different. We currently have a council-authorized policy that says the city of Louisville will contribute a fixed amount towards the retirees' monthly premiums based on the employee's tenure with the city of Louisville. And with the current approved...
But that only, is only if they stay on the city plan.
Absolutely. Yes, yes. So the current, that current version of that benefit, what that looks like, is employees that have, that retire tomorrow with less than 20 years of service don't receive any subsidy. They're paying full freight. If employee's been here for 20 to 24 years of service, when they retire, they get a subsidy. That current amount is $498 a month. If they're 25-plus years, they get a subsidy of $547 a month. So you go back to that employee, they're, they're only paying $29 today because the city covers most of the costs. Then they go to retire up until they're 65. If they retire with less than 20 years with us, they're going to pay, if they're on the HSA plan, they'll pay $1,415 a month. If they are, if they get, they level up for the subsidy. So if they're 20 to 24 years, they would, that, that subsidy would decrease them down to $917 a month. And then 25-plus years, down to $868 a month. So you understand that the employee perspective here is that even with being here 25-plus years, I'll go from $29 a month to $839 a month. It is a big change-up. So the question is, why? Why is that, why is it like that? And the short answer is, is OPEB. So OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, refers to standards adopted by the government, Accounting Standards Board to ensure employees account for a long-term, employers account for a long-term liability of programs such as post-retirement medical coverage. So our current benefit I just described, that cost that those subsidies for retirees at those certain thresholds, we spend about $100,000 a year to fund that program. That creates an OPEB liability that's about $3.8 million. What's unique about us is we've been very thoughtful financially, so we actually have that 3.8, or we have that fully funded, which most employers do not. Mostly it's just outstanding as a liability. And so we're in a good financial position based on that program. What we've done is worked with the actuary to just do an initial, hey, for argument's sake, what if we built a program that looked like this? We still do zero subsidy for 0 to 20, 0 to 19 years. And then from 20 to 24 years, the city, instead of a set dollar amount, subsidized 50%. And from 25-plus, subsidized all of it. We ran that scenario and they identified, right now, we spent about 100K. In that scenario, our annual contribution would increase to about 1.1 million a year, or about $980,000 increase in year one. What's different in that, if it ties to percentage, the long-term liability will grow significantly. So that would mean day one, the OPEB liability will go from what today is 3.8 million to 17.3 million. And then over a 20-year period, that would grow to about $47 million. I say that not as a, just as FYI. This stuff with OPEB and looking long-term at retiree health expenses, it's all very interrelated. It's, it can get very costly. So this is a long lineup to say what's on the slide here. Our next steps are, we're going to look at our 17 cities, look at what level of subsidies they're doing there. And then come back with, have our actuary run a couple of examples of something that's probably, stick with the fixed amount, not a percentage, because that's part of where the big OPEB liability comes from. But find that medium of seeing if we can get at the cost a little bit with retirees without breaking the bank. So we're going to bring back future items on that.
On one of those future items, can we look at the 20, if you...
Just give it to them.
Just give it to them and let their, let them get their own insurance.
Just give them a set...
They're off the liability, we're saving.
You say, give them a set dollar amount?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let them get, if, well... No, that's part of their retirement benefit.
So you're still allowing it forward?
No, no, no. You still have to account for it. Do I? You still have to account for it.
Okay.
So that's the part of the OPEB liability because you are saying that you are liable for that for the duration of, you don't like it? I'm sorry, tell that to the federal government.
And actually, what you'll see is when GFOA changed these rules about OPEB, you saw a lot of cities moving, changing these to be able to be financially stable with regard to it. So that's really things that have prompted changes for us.
It's just kind of a kick in the gut for, I'm sorry. Nothing against the city.
Understood.
But, oh, thank you for giving us 35 years. Now your premium just went up to $1,800. Aren't you in the gut?
Yeah, it's a challenging one. So I think our intention is to see what level subsidy other cities are doing and then try and have them model some things that are not as, as wild as what I just described or that is much more cost-effective.
Welcome to American healthcare.
She's right.
Oh, he's looking at me.
When you're looking at that...
Look at Ted.
Has there been a big trend where self, self-insurance?
Yes.
Any cities that are going to be interested if we're allowed to as a city?
We are self-insured right now.
Are we self-insured?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And to value-based medicine, to be able to go through and provide community care efforts, you know, outbound outreach from nurse practitioners, things like that.
Yeah.
Say, when you bounce out of the hospital, there's a black hole people go into for two weeks and they get right back in again. That's where the cost comes in, right?
Oh, absolutely.
These ER admissions and everything that's back there.
I think that's a big piece of our clinic, is, it's a unique, I think that's a differentiator for us. And we're actually re-looking at our clinic relationship right now. But that's, if we, if we can keep pushing more people to use that as more of their primary, then it gets at those issues, absolutely.
I'd love to talk to you about that. I've been at the base for 20 years, so I'd love to talk to you about that. I'll reach out in four days.
Yeah, sounds good. All right, and then continuing on, after retiree coverage, dental maximums. So our proposals for January include increasing annual maximums on dental as well as our lifetime ortho maximum is particularly low. So looking at increasing both of those. And right now, we have a one-year dental waiting period for major dental. And the last thing I would want is for an employee that works here for four months...
That's the worst pain ever.
Exactly. Employee that works here for four months and can't get their dental work and then they leave us because we, we have that built into our plan. So it's a very low-cost item that we want moving forward.
When's the last time the dental maximums have been changed? Because I know you can reach 2,500 in a sneeze.
I know it's been a while. I don't know when the last one was.
Long time.
Long time. There you go. And then last one, just, we heard from our employees, we don't understand how it all works. And so a big piece of when we make major changes this year is we're going to do significant education with all employees. Just to close this out, planning your changes, right now, we do our medical on a fiscal year and we're looking to move that this cycle. So we've moved to January 1. That actually helps with the understandability for our employees when we take all of our FSA, HSA, deferred comp, all these IRS things and put them on the same year as their planned year. And then all of, the good news is, all these things on, I showed you a bunch of numbers on compensation costs. We've built all this in within our self-insurance fund budget. So we're not asking for additional dollars to do this. It does cost money, but we're, we're in a healthy spot on that fund. So we think we can build all this within with no specific asks. There is one in, so this may look contrary to say, okay, let's decrease costs but increase premiums. The thing is, we actually, all we're doing is, on one of our plans, the dependent tiers for employee, spouse, children and family is overly subsidized in relation to what they should be. So we're going to take a small step to even that out. So just on, one of our two plans, we'll do, have a slight increase on the spouse, child and family, but no increase on the employee only. And that'll help us go in the right direction of appropriate funding levels for both of the two plans. No changes to the other plan. And just to summarize again, looking at all these pay items, appreciate y'all's feedback on holiday and vacation. And then major benefits changing, changes coming for January with lots of education for employees. And then y'all see more about job family progressions in the police and fire certain education pay. And I'm happy to answer any questions y'all have.
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
The removal of the tobacco penalty?
Oh, yes.
Can we talk about that for a second?
Yeah, absolutely. So right now, we, we, we ask folks to sign an affidavit to say whether they use tobacco products or not. And then assuming that they're honest and they tell us, yes, I do, then we require them to go to a cessation program. So one, and we also have a lot of administrative pieces to that. So we thought this was an example of a program that is a well-intentioned program that isn't achieving desired results. As we went back and spent time with our nurse practitioner at the clinic and asked her, over the last five years, how many people have you seen actually quit using tobacco products using this program? Her answer was zero. So our thought process was, why create this whole administrative mechanism that's not achieving any desired results? We're already doing 10,000 things, let's not do something that is well-intentioned but isn't achieving an outcome.
So wellness programs are kind of a big thing in corporate now, right?
Yes, sir.
You have a wellness coach that comes in and then work with somebody that says, okay, if you're going to achieve a BMI, the test is broken, you're not going to smoke, you're going to use tobacco products, your blood pressure's X, your neck circumference is better, you can achieve quite a bit. Then instead of penalizing folks, you don't need the discount for folks who do. Have we looked at anything like that?
We are doing that right now. When folks go and we hire them, we actually have, I don't remember the number off the top of my head, Charlotte, but when folks go, when they new hire, they get a, is it, what's the incentive that they get?
So they get charged additional money if they don't go do their biometric.
There you go.
So they have to go get them done within their first 60 days on the plan. So they do the lipid panel, your cholesterol, your glucose, they do your BMI, they do your weight, all that stuff, and then blood pressure.
If they, if they meet though, there's an opportunity to discount for your, for your out-of-pocket.
So if they meet their numbers, they earn points toward our wellness program. And then we pay our incentive out every October. I actually saw it double last year. I foresee more and more participation.
Yeah, more utilization of that. It's also driving people to that clinic as well, so it's helpful.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, awesome.
Any questions? All right. Thank you very much. All right. Workshop session, item C, discussion of engagement related to Old Town Transit Oriented Development Plan.
Does it cover the DCTA? Does he have to step out?
Like, I have to read this one?
It's kind of, I mean, it's all of Old Town. It has the properties included in the plan. Do you want to lose your...
A sitting hearing.
We're in a sitting hearing. I'm trying to think, have you...
It's easier, I'll just step in.
If you want to step in...
The benefit is negligible to DCTA. I mean, it's, it's a whole, the whole regional thing. I don't, I don't see how you're getting a, a direct benefit from that.
Okay, I just don't want to...
She wants to talk to you for a second.
But I'm not an attorney. Might be appearance conversation versus an actual conversation.
Yeah, but it's better to be safe.
Is it? People say that all the time, I don't know, that's true.
Come here, put your hand up, right here, come on. It's a play, it's a game.
That's true.
It's for the ethics.
Michelle, Bertie, your turn. Did you come back yet? Wait, wait, Officer, where is he?
So it's just a recap, no decision.
Did he say it out?
Nope.
Are you staying there?
You stay out.
Oh, you stay out, okay.
You're staying out here.
After consulting with our attorney.
We don't want any appearance.
Wanting an appearance, understood.
Bye-bye.
We'll call you back in when we need to.
I'll figure out, see you guys.
Probably. All right. We have Mr. Richard Lukey.
Good old mayor, members of the council. This purpose of this presentation is just to give you a brief, quick overview of our engagement activities related to the Old Town Transit-Oriented Master Plan update. I know that's a mouthful. So just as a quick pressure, this is the boundaries. We did discuss this plan at length at the council retreat back in March. The one primary difference from the 2017 update is that we added this eastern portion east of the rail line. We had two primary components to the engagement. The first was individual meetings with various stakeholders, property owners, business owners, interested developers. And then our second component was our public input open house, that was held June 1 at the Louisville Grand Theater. This is a snapshot of the postcard that went out to all of the property owners and business owners in the, within the boundary of the study area. So first on, next few slides are an overview of the interactive posters that we had on display at the open house. We had 16 attendees at the open house, seven were Old Town residents, eight were business owners, and then we had one vacant property owner. And it's hard to see, but there's little stars kind of sprinkled all over this map, so we had fairly good representation. You can say the low turnout sent a good signal. Generally, when everyone's happy with everything, you don't have a lot of involvement or a high attendance at these type of things. This is one of our boards that just was for the purpose of kind of explaining some of the elements of the plan. At the top, it talked about the character districts, and then here at the bottom, it explained the framework plan component of the plan, of the update. This is various analysis that was done by our consultants, so it gave a little bit more detail to the attendees to take a look at and get a little bit better understanding of the different types of analysis that was done. This is a snapshot of some of the infrastructure analysis that was done, and we all know that there's quite a few challenges for infrastructure and some very big costs associated with that. This board, this poster was a priority ranking on which areas of Old Town do we want to really focus some of our activities. So you can see the primary area between the station and the core of Old Town was one, east of the station was two, down closer to business 121 was three, and then this area just off of Purnell and west of the rail line was number four. So you could see, we didn't have a whole lot. I think a lot of our attendees felt that it all is very important, but we did have a couple of folks say that this area over here near the state, east of the station, was a high priority, and then number three down here, the innovation district area. Then this was just open feedback from our attendees on the overall framework plan and illustrative plan, and overall, there was a desire for more mixed use with commercial, desire for more passive open space to kind of reinforce that five-minute walk to a park initiative. Everyone wanted streets with safe bike lanes and wide sidewalks with pedestrian priority crossings, and those are spelled out a little bit more detail in these two stickies here. Then the, as far as plan implementation steps, so we asked the folks to kind of prioritize, or give us our blocks, what's most important as far as action steps. I know there's a lot of text here, so the next few slides kind of summarize that feedback.
So did you go back one?
Sure.
Everything was very important.
Yes. We're very happy with that. But overall, as far as our implementation, the number one priority was to rezone all properties to a mixed-use zoning district regardless of ownership support, so that's a pretty bold statement. Number two was to add all concept plan streets to the thoroughfare plan. Number three is to provide economic incentives for developments based on pro forma and compliance with the concept plan. Four was to invest in the infrastructure needed to support the envisioned development. Number five was to market to developers and landowners for the desired development pattern. And then lastly, number six was to add key concept streets to the thoroughfare plan. So that's a little bit different from number two. Number two was all the streets, and number six was just the key concepts, so it ranked lower. So the, again, the vast majority ranked pretty much these three statements as very important. To invest and support the development of utilities to enable desired development types, to change the zoning regulations to ensure the desired uses are allowed and incompatible uses are not allowed, then finally, to ensure the proposed public street network is created. So those are kind of the three main priorities and the main vision of the plan update. Second component of engagement was the individual meetings that I mentioned earlier, so we started mid-March, and we've been busy ever since then, about 16 different meetings that we've had with various businesses, various developers. All of these meetings were very positive. They are all in the plan, fully support things, and really want to be a part of it. We do have a few individual engagement meetings yet to have, we have several of these scheduled, so we are working actively to get those wrapped up. So overall, we have very strong support for the overall vision, strong support for our implementation steps, and we're very proud that there is a very strong willingness to work with the city to achieve the vision, the desired results outlined in the plan. So therefore, our next steps, we want to go ahead and complete those individual engagement meetings, we'll work with our consultant to make the final edits to the framework plan and illustrative plan, then we'll put together and complete an engagement summary and implementation action steps that will actually be added to the back of the plan, kind of really the final steps of that plan, then we'll hold public hearings for the final adoption, and that's expected in August. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm open for any questions.
Counsel?
Sounds good.
So, Richard, go back, this was a number of, the survey was, I'm sorry, how many people attended the original survey? Just to recap.
The open house had 16.
16.
Now, we did have the plan online for quite, for several weeks, and we didn't really get any feedback, which, again, that sends a really good message, not really having, most people, when they're happy, they don't normally respond.
Fair. I would be curious as to the individual property owner's feedback as we get further into this process. Just, they're the ones who are going to be most impacted, those 16, about half of them were individual property residents, and I happen to know a couple of them, so, but the other half were owners, so it's always a balancing act between what the public might want versus what a property owner might want, so...
Right.
That's where I want to make sure that we've got a good conversation here in this room, so that we know where that's all laying out, so...
And through the public hearing process, we'll have another bite of the apple, we'll send out postcards again, and make sure everyone is aware of the public hearings.
And I think, on the flip side, why we may not be hearing stuff is that, you know, they like that the idea that the city's going to be investing in more public access, which means their property value's going to go up, so...
Absolutely.
And just to clarify, that the public hearing is going to be for the adoption of the plan, not necessarily for the action steps that were listed here to move forward?
Well, the steps will be included into the plan.
They'll be in the plan, but having it in the plan to rezone properties is not the same as rezoning a property.
Correct.
So that will be a separate process.
That is correct. But that'll probably occur very incrementally over time.
Any other comments or questions? That is the last of our items for the workshop, and we're going to go ahead and step away, and we will start up our regular session at 7:00 PM.
And then you, in here.
I'll catch you with the invocation. I think we're good. Good evening, it is 7:00 PM, we're going to call this session of the Louisville City Council to order. We do have a quorum. First up tonight, we have our invocation with Councilmember Green.
If you please stand and join me for a moment of quiet contemplation. Amen, thank you.
Please join me in the pledges to the American and Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one individual.
I have the infrequent opportunity tonight to actually swear in our new city secretary, Mr. Harris Thomas. Got a new placard and everything, let's give Thomas a hand. I had the pleasure of introducing him to Jackie's Ham and Eggs, so if anybody's been to Jackie's here in Louisville, everything is still huge, so it's awesome. Thomas, if you don't mind, if you face me, and I'll see if I can get through this.
All right.
Please repeat after me. I...
I, Thomas Harris.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
Of the Office of City Secretary of the City of Louisville.
Of the Office of City Secretary of the City of Louisville.
State of Texas.
State of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend...
And will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend...
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the charter and ordinances of this city.
And the charter and ordinances of this city.
And I furthermore solemnly swear...
And I furthermore solemnly swear...
That I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, or promised...
That I have not directly paid, offered, or promised...
To pay, contribute, nor promise to contribute...
To pay, contribute, nor promise to contribute.
Any money or valuable thing...
Any money or valuable thing.
Or promised any public office or employment...
Or promised any public office or employment.
As a reward to secure my appointment.
As a reward to secure my appointment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome to the team.
Thank you, Mayor.
You have any words to say? And I know Thomas's family's up here from Houston, so thank you so much for getting up here, we really appreciate you. You'll find that we're a pretty big family up here, so I think you're going to like it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you.
Appreciate it.
All right, we do have a couple of quick proclamations. First up, I'd like to welcome Mr. Marcus Gallegos, our Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation. And we have a proclamation declaring the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month.
Yes, we do.
Did Stacy write this?
Probably, yeah.
Because it's looking like Stacy.
It is very Stacy.
Here we go. Whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, ensures ecological beauty and sustainability, and connects people with nature, increases economic prosperity, and provides common spaces for people to socialize; and whereas the City of Louisville is committed to restoration and preservation of its green centerpiece and extending the green to the entire community through Louisville 2025 Plan; and whereas the Healthy Infrastructure Plan is a roadmap for providing residents of Louisville with healthy opportunities to play, explore, and connect; and whereas the Louisville Parks and Recreation Department's mission is to become the best parks and recreation system in the state of Texas. Where, become, we already are. Whereas the department will achieve the mission by ensuring everyone plays by providing a 10-minute walk to a park for 100% of residents by 2035 and by establishing a diverse and accessible program menu; and whereas the department makes certain everyone is welcome and safe by creating and implementing sustainable park development and operational standards and by promoting an environment of inclusion and diversity for park professionals and park fans; and whereas the department strives to ensure everyone knows about the benefits of parks and recreation by cultivating meaningful partnerships with park fans and community organizations, establishing effective marketing and communication strategies, as well as earning recognition via awards, accolades, and certifications; and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, now therefore it be it resolved by the Louisville City Council that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month in Louisville, Texas. Thank you guys so much, our Parks team, we couldn't do it without them. You have anything to say?
Yeah, sure. Thank you for this proclamation, and it's really a testament to our staff here. Can you guys all stand, so they can recognize y'all? Yes. It's a testament to what they do and work very, very hard to bring Parks and Rec to the community and impact the daily lives for all of Louisville, and we just can't do it without them, thank you.
Awesome, thank you so much. Hey, folks, I want to take just a second, because what our Parks Department does is very different from what I grew up with. And what I grew up with was, cities had parks, and you went out and you used a park, and that was the extent of the transaction. It was a space, and if you knew how to use it, you were fine. But a lot of folks don't know how to use the outdoors, they didn't grow up in the scouts like I did, they didn't grow up in the outdoors, and so engagement with those spaces is very different for them, and so our Parks Department understands that, and they are creating an environment where, hey, we've got this amenity, we've got this thing, come out here, let us show you how to use it. And you know what? They do. And so I want to thank you guys for that, because without that hand to help bring people out, you know, we'd have a bunch of really great empty spaces, and parks aren't great unless people are using them. So I appreciate everything you guys are doing. Next up, we do have our Police Department, record staff here, and do we have anybody from the department? I see a shirt, come on, you got to come on up here. So this one, this is a quiet part of the department that is, does all the heavy lifting, because I don't know about y'all, but every one of the officers I see has those little cameras, and guess what? That's a record. Everything they do is a record, so it's amazing the amount of data that these folks have to work with and move through, so come on over here. Here we go. This one's not written by Stacy, so we'll move a little quicker.
I'm not reading it.
I got it, I got it. Whereas the City of Louisville Police Department Records Division is responsible for answering non-emergency calls, assisting customers in the police lobby, processing requests for information, and retaining police records through their life cycle. By the way, don't call 911 for fireworks, just call the non-emergency number, and I'm sure they'll help you with that. Unless the house is burning, then call 911. Whereas the police record staff responds to requests from internal and external customers and is integral in building relationships with other police agencies, governmental entities, and other organizations promoting inter-agency communication; and whereas the Louisville Police Department creates approximately 12,000 offense records and approximately 4,500 arrest records each year, which must be coded and maintained; and whereas the police record staff plays a significant role in properly disseminating public records in accordance with the Public Information Act; and whereas the City of Louisville recognizes the importance of every law enforcement position to serve our community. Now therefore, I TJ Gilmore, Mayor of the City of Louisville, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of July 9 through 15, 2023, as Police Records Week. And the City of Louisville encourage all citizens to express their appreciation to the Louisville Police Department Record Staff for their dedication to the organization and contribution to the community, proclaim this third day of July 2023, and I'd also ask you not to add to the records that they need to process. Let's give them a hand.
Just, on behalf of the Records Department, just thank you to the officers and all the employees for their hard work and all their dedication for everybody, so, that's it.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change from planned development mixed-use PDMU district to planned development mixed-use PDMU district with updated standards and attachments for the commercial sub-district on 6.641 acres of land legally described as Louisville Corporate Center Block A Lot 2 located on the west side of IH 35E, approximately 700 feet north of Grandy's Lane and 1,000 feet south of Justin Road FM 407, as requested by Joseph Hornisher, Kim Lee Horn, the applicant on behalf of Field Street Development 1 LTD and 2018 Lots and FLCT Limited, the property owners, 23-01-1-PZ. The original 90-acre planned development for the Village at Louisville was approved by the City Council on November 16, 2015, and amended on July 20, 2020. The planned development contains several sub-districts with specific land use regulations and allows for sub-districts to be amended independently of the other sub-districts. The applicant proposes to amend the approximately 6.6-acre undeveloped commercial sub-district along the eastern portion of the planned development along Interstate Highway 35 East. The proposed amendment includes the addition of multifamily dwellings and retail-ready areas as permitted uses, and amended Attachment 14 Commercial Subdistrict Concept Plan, and amended Attachment 15 Commercial Subdistrict Buildings Elevations, and the addition of a new Attachment 17 Commercial Subdistrict Landscape Plans. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval 6 to 0 on June 6, 2023, and it is recommended that the City Council will approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. We do have Mr. Richard Lukey available for questions. And Liz, we're going to do this to close the public hearing, and then we'll go into closed session? Okay. So if there are no comments, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in the second. We have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Counsel is now going to recess into closed session on item number E1 in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney. There we go. All right, counsel, is there any action to be taken? I'll entertain a motion. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately 6.641 acres of land legally described as Lewisville Corporate Center Block A Lot 2 located on the west side of IH35E, approximately 700 feet north of Grandes Lane and 1,000 feet south of Justin Road, FM 407, from planned development mixed-use district zoning to planned development mixed-use district zoning in order to amend the existing planning development district ordinance to update the standards and zoning plan, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the public interest and general welfare demand this zoning change and amendment therein made, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date in declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes 5-1. Public Hearing, Item 2. Consideration of an Ordinance granting a special use permit for a self-service storage facility on approximately 3.4 acres legally described as Lot 1 Block A 121 Railroad Edition Zone Light Industrial District located on the east side of South Railroad Street approximately 1,300 feet south of State Highway 121 Business as requested by Greg Smith, Monaco Pinnacle, on behalf of ALW Land Properties LLC, the property owner, case number 23-01-2-SUP. MP Garages, the applicant, plans to develop a self-service storage facility on South Railroad Street. A zone change from heavy industrial zoning district to light industrial zoning district was approved by City Council for this site on June 19, 2023. The light industrial district requires a special use permit for the proposed self-storage facility use. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval 6 to nothing on May 2, 2023, and it is recommended that the City Council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. We do have Mr. Richard Lutke, our Planning Director, available for questions. Counsel, if there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes 6 to nothing. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit for a self-service storage facility on approximately 3.4 acres legally described as Lot 1 Block A 121 Railroad Edition located on the east side of South Railroad Street approximately 1,300 feet south of State Highway 121 Business and Zone Light Industrial District, providing for repealer severability, penalty, and an effective date in declaring an emergency.
Counsel, please vote. Motion passes 6 to nothing. Item F, Visitors/Citizens Forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the City Council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. City Secretary, do we have any speaker cards?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Item G, Consent Agenda. All of the following items on the Consent Agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the City Secretary. City Secretary, do we have any speaker cards or e-comment?
No, Mr. Mayor, we don't have any.
Thank you. Counsel, anything to pull?
Move to approve the Consent Agenda.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item H, Regular Hearing. Consideration of one appointment to place number five on the Old Town Design Review Committee. We do have Ms. Cade having to step away. At the June 19, 2023 City Council meeting, a vacancy was declared for place number five on the Old Town Design Review Committee. Applicants currently interested in serving on the Old Town Design Review Committee have been included in the backup for this item. It's recommended that the City Council consider one appointment to place number five on the Old Town Design Review Committee as set forth. Counsel, do we have some recommendations? Or A?
I would recommend Kelly Blackhall.
I was gonna move to appoint Kelly Blackhall to place number five on the Old Town Design Review Committee as set forth in the caption.
All right, so we have a motion to approve-
And a second.
And a second for Kelly Blackhall. We have a motion and a second, counsel. If you please vote. Approved, 5 to nothing. Thank you, counsel. Councilmember Cade? I mean, I mean, you could hang out, hang out back there. I mean, there's plenty of cool AV toys. Item 8. Consideration of one appointment for an alternate member of the Executive Committee to the Dallas Regional Mobility Coalition, DRMC, Board of Directors. The City holds a seat on the Dallas Regional Mobility Coalition. The Coalition consists of a group of Dallas-Fort Worth area municipal, county, and transit authorities that address transportation issues across the region. DRMC meets once a month at their Plano, Texas office. Mayor Gilmore was appointed as a member of the Executive Committee to the DRMC by the City Council during the April 3, 2023, meeting, and the DRMC is requesting that the City Council appoint an alternate member to serve in the event of the mayor's absence. City Council, I know I had a couple of folks express interest, so I'm not sure exactly who all wants to do this, but it's a valuable, it's a valuable tool.
I'm happy to do it.
I was wondering how many things he's been appointed to since he's come on.
Yeah.
After all of us, I don't think he matches up to us.
And it's, yeah, so-
So I would like to nominate Patrick.
Awesome. Counsel, any other comments, or do I have a second?
Second.
I got a motion, and I got a second. All right, so we got a motion from Councilmember Cade, and we got a second from Councilmember Meredith to appoint Councilmember Kelly to the DRMC as an alternate. You guys good with that? All right. Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. You and I will chat about it, so welcome. It's actually a really interesting meeting. It's just, it's an awkward time, so that's part of the challenge, I think, with that one. So I appreciate you being able to do it. All right, we are now to item I, Reports. Reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. I'm gonna start with Councilmember Meredith since he's sitting to my immediate right, and it's easy for me to keep track of the circle.
Yes, Mayor, I've got some activities for the week for the library. Tween Scene for children age 9 to 12, Wednesday, July 5, 3 to 4 p.m. Ticket is required at the Bennett Program Room. Address Your Stress for teens age 13 to 18, Thursday, July 6, 6:30 to 7:30. Registration is required at the Bennett Program Room. Friday Family Matinee for all ages, all films rated PG, Friday, July 7, 2 to 4 p.m. Ticket is required at the Bennett Program Room. And that is all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Troy?
Yes, sir, I have a number of activities for the Lewisville Grand Theater. First of all, Texas Tunes featuring Max Stallings, presented by the City of Lewisville on July 15. Saucy, I don't know how Samba wants that pronounced, but Saucy Thoughts Podcast and Evening of Live Poetry presented by Texas poet Samba Se on July 22. And then, as always, the acoustics, well, this is the Songwriters Challenge, Acoustic Fridays Songwriter Challenge presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville on July 28. And by the way, there are a lot of good songs at that, those challenges every time. And then there are several art exhibitions going on right now, Voices and Artist Retrospective presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville and Fresh Ideas 2022 winner Rebecca J. Jones, that's going through July 8. Life is a Theater from Shame to Grace, the Society of Depressed Artists, SOADA, S-O-D-A, yes, through August 6. And Fresh Ideas 2023, Visual Art League of Lewisville opens July 15. And that is all I have.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney? City Secretary?
I just want to take a point of personal privilege to thank the mayor and council for investing confidence in me for this position. I got some big shoes to fill with Julie, so I want to thank Jennifer publicly for taking me under her wing. I want to thank my wife and my family for being here tonight, and I look forward to working with everybody on the team, city management team, as well as all the directors. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Officer, thank you. Anything, Mr. Lutke?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
I have something to report. This past Friday, the Lewisville Parks and Recreation Department were honored or recognized as a 2023 Clyde Award winner by the North Central Texas Council of Governments for the work on our Healthy Infrastructure Plan. We're recognized for excellence in environmental planning and the public policy and planning category. So it was a great event. We all, several of us attended this last Friday, and we'll be happy to share with you.
That was a great event, and thank you so much for all the work. I mean, it's great to be recognized, but I think more importantly, it's great to have the impacts that it's already having.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. I do have the lake level to report to you. It currently sits at 521 feet, .09, which is 95.7% full.
I love our culture.
Just real briefly, Mayor and Counsel, if you hadn't noticed, the Tittle McFadden Public Safety Center, there's things coming up out of the ground. What you see over there is a parking garage being erected. But in the meantime, there's a lot of other activity going on there. Just wanted to kind of let you know, the pilings, the piers that are going in for the building and all that are going well. Believe it or not, as of last week, there's 417 of 558, five more weeks of drilling before that's done. And then you'll see more stuff coming out of the ground. It's been very hot, and those of you who know a little bit about concrete is 95 degrees and higher, it's a problem. They're literally adding ice to the concrete mix to pour those piers. So, but everything's going well. So just wanted to give you a heads up. If you're wondering what's going on there, come on by and we can talk about it.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Kelly?
Yeah, so a few things here. So Storytime Stroll, East Hill Park, 9 a.m. on the 24th, those are always a lot of fun. July 21, Storytime at the Dragon Park, that's at 9:30 a.m. Also, we can't forget the fireworks tomorrow, tomorrow night, and it's going to be out in the Castle Hills neighborhood. We've lived there for 23 years, it's always a great time. Welcome everybody. Looking forward to seeing, having Freedom Festival out at Castle Hills tomorrow night. So looking forward to seeing everybody out there.
Councilmember Green?
I just wanted to mention how excited my dog is that the fireworks are not going to be in Old Town this year. And to remind folks that fireworks in the city is illegal. I'm gonna hear it tomorrow night. I know I am. But I think Mr. Mayor already stole my thunder on what I was gonna say about the fireworks. If you hear them, please do not call 911. If you hear fireworks in your neighborhood, that will overload the system, and we can't have that. So please call the non-emergency number. Does anybody know that by heart, what the non-
So we know we'll be calling.
Yes. And speaking of dogs, and cats, and all sorts of furry things, we are also running an adoption special through the end of the month. All dogs over 90 pounds, right? Over 90 pounds and all cats are free? 20 or 40 pounds, usually $90 for the adoption fee. The fees are being waived at the end of the month. So go get you a best friend.
Or two.
Or two. Yes, that would be a dog, not cat. I don't think we have any 20-pound cats.
Well, as Kristen said, don't get caught with fireworks, or you will be adding to the police records. Do that at your own peril. This Thursday, we have a Summer Blast Event at the Visitor Information Center. It will be from 9 a.m. to noon. There will include free treats, activities, and exploring the history rooms. There'll be inflatables and snow cones from the Tiki of North Dallas. So come on out and come check it out. That's all I have.
Councilmember Cade?
Yeah, how much are those tickets, Chief, for fireworks? Aren't they like $2,000 each? So unless you want to add to our funds, let the professionals do the fireworks. I have to say, I took my grandson to the splash pad, and I've lived in this town forever. And for like nine straight years, every summer, would take my granddaughter to College Street Pool. And I have, and they were trying to get the chemicals balanced, so everyone had to be really patient, and my grandson is working, he's working on it, okay? And he was so excited when the water came on, because he went and grabbed everybody that he didn't know to tell them the water was on. But I saw so much excitement and energy and just parents talking to one another, getting to know each other, grandparents, you know, playing in there with it in the splash pad. And I saw more heads than I have ever seen at College Street Pool at any given time I was ever there from 2011 to 2020. And it is magnificent. I am so, I just, I would like to, I would like to actually, I'm going to go on record, I would like to have another one somewhere. And the backspace just looks hungry for something. But I just want to reiterate to parents out there, just be mindful, read the signs or whatever. Don't let your little ones use the rollerblades and their bicycles going through the splash pad, because they were there. And, you know, they had to stay on the outer ring, but it was, I can't say enough. We took a lot of heat, and everyone has turned out and just drove. And it was, it was a great experience. He didn't want to leave. And yes, we have to go back again and again and again. So, and I will do that.
Counsel, that's all I have as well. We do have an item for closed session tonight, so in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, legal issues related to the rezoning and/or imposition of a development moratorium on approximately 87.23 acres of commercial property within the area bounded by East College Street to the north, East Valley Ridge Boulevard to the east, State Highway 121 Business to the south, East Main Street to the southwest, and Dallas Area Rapid Transit, DART Denton County Transit Authority, DCTA, railway right-of-way to the west. There we go. All right, counsel, is there any action to be taken off our closed session? All right, as there is no further action to be taken on tonight's agenda, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. And that is 8:20 p.m.